Good evening, everybody. We appreciate you chiming in with us here tonight on this March 10th special edition of our COVID-19 Town Hall update, 6:00 PM. Thank you for joining us. We have so much to share with you tonight. We have some new developments and we wish to give them to you, all of our health professionals, our president, and all of our leadership here just chiming in with you this evening. So thank you again for being here tonight. It's a big night, a big event, so let's open up in prayer and we'll get started. So, yeah, the end God. We thank you, Father, that you have made this day. We thank you that we can rejoice in it, Lord, but by choice, Lord and Father, we bring you into our realm. So, Lord, you know all things that we give you this time. Pray for your wisdom, your great wisdom, Lord, which is the principal thing. Father, may we learn, may we grow in our knowledge, Father, and may we continue to seek you, Father, while you may be found. So tonight, Lord, we ask you to be with us in this Town Hall meeting. Be with our health professionals, Lord, our HCOC, our UCG president, vice president, Lord, and all those that are on this call with us, Father. We ask and we pray that this knowledge would bless the nation, Lord. May they receive it, Lord, may they be open-minded, Lord, and, Lord, be blessed by the information. So, Father, we give it this time, use it for your honor and your glory. And in shew as mighty name we pray, amen, amen. So we do thank you for tuning in with us tonight here. Just a real quick update and I will introduce the president of the Navajo Nation, Jonathan Nez here. But personal responsibility is key to staying safe and continuing the reduction in COVID-19 cases and hospitalizations. For nearly a year, we've implemented many safety and preventative measures, but at some point, we have to take careful steps to safely reopen in stages, and that's what tonight is all about. We strongly encourage everyone to continue practicing all precautions and keep your guard up. Vaccinations are another key component that has helped to reduce the number of new cases, and we hope to continue seeing more of our Navajo people receiving the vaccines. So please be safe, make good decisions for you and your loved ones, and keep praying. And so we thank you again for tuning in on this March 10th special edition of our COVID-19 Town Hall update. And so without further ado, I'd like to take this time to welcome and to introduce the president of our Navajo Nation, Mr. Jonathan Nez, and we appreciate him, we appreciate his leadership, and he's just been a stalwart in leadership here for the Navajo Nation. So we thank you, sir, and welcome.
KWRK, KKNS, Jonathan Nez, Navajo Nation President, Vice President. [speaking Navajo] [speaking Navajo] [speaking Navajo] Hand sanitizer. [speaking Navajo] 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 August, September. [speaking Navajo] 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 Hand sanitizer. [speaking Navajo] 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 [speaking Navajo]
Ladies and gentlemen, I just gave an update in the Navajo language. And Eli, if you could put the slides up. You know, the first positive COVID-19 test and the first case here on the Navajo Nation was last year, March 17th. We're almost a year now of the first case and the first death. And the whole year of information being given. So next week, we will remember the lives lost to COVID-19. And we pray for those recovering from the virus. We must heal, you know, we must heal as a nation and continue to fight this monster and to listen to our healthcare professionals. We have learned a lot, ladies and gentlemen, over a whole year now from our scientific community and our healthcare professionals. Of course, getting the information from the CDC, wearing your mask, social distancing, washing your hands with soap and water, and using hand sanitizer, and staying at home as much as you can. And I want to say thank you to the Navajo people for the hard work that you've done, honoring and respecting your healthcare professionals and your leaders. That's how we are getting through this. With all the information that we're receiving on a daily basis, we give it to you. We give it to you and we share it with you Tuesdays and Thursdays, 10:00 AM every week, COVID-19 updates. I know some of you probably say it's the same thing over and over, and we keep saying it because that's the critical practices that will get us through. Wearing a mask, social distance, washing your hands, staying at home. There's nothing more to that. That's the four things, you know, in Navajo, four. The four things that will push back COVID-19 here on the Navajo Nation. The first Town Hall was March 31st of 2020, almost one year. And those of you that are listening on KTNN, you heard us on KTNN periodically. And we have, tonight, we want to, we have a big announcement. We're in the red status for some time, for many months now, and we're going to go into the orange status now. What does that mean? Please listen up because we have Dr. Jill Jim. We have the epidemiology team, Ramona Antonez Del Yazi on the call. We also have our Assistant Attorney General, Kimberly Dutcher. And we appreciate our vice president opening us up with a word of prayer. And because of that, you know, we're all united and praying to push back on this virus. And tonight, we're going to transition. We can only do so much. Now the responsibility and what Dr. Fowler will be talking about is personal responsibility. It's on each and every one of us now. We're responsible for doing the protocols as we go to businesses. And businesses are going to be reopened in a phase, baby steps, in a phased approach to reopening here. We want to remind everybody not to let down. It will take each and every one of us to keep the numbers down. It's our responsibility. We must continue to follow these preventive measures, these effective preventive measures that guide us to these low numbers now. And as you see the slide there, 29,900 people have come down with the virus. 16,212 have recovered. 1,205 of our loved ones have lost their lives to COVID-19. Our thoughts and prayers continue to go out to our families that have lost loved ones. And the reason why we're transitioning from the red status to orange status is we have seen some very low numbers. Look, last, in 24 hours, we only had 13 positive cases and one death. One way too many, of course, on the deaths. But we continue to pray for Navajo people that this continues to keep going down. If you go to the next slide, it just shows you the progression over the many months and the weeks. We went through two phases. This country went through three phases. Three big, big increases in COVID-positive cases. And here in Navajo, we only went through two. Thank you to each and every one of you, Navajo people. And you can see where around Labor Day it took off and so contagious that we had a hard time bringing the numbers down. But if you see away at the end on the right side of the chart, towards the end, we've been seeing the numbers go down, and that's why we're transitioning. The thing that's different about this time around is we have vaccination. If you go to the next slide, we have the vaccine now that pushes back against the virus spread in our communities. And that's critical here. Those of you that are listening on KTNN and KWRK, KKNS, Facebook, this is one of the reasons why we're starting to transition gradually, baby steps, into reopening here on the Navajo Nation. If you look at the chart there, the total doses that we received from the federal government, 195,540 shots given, 141,797 were put into the arms of our Navajo people. 52,433 are the second doses. And we get this every week, additional doses. We got Johnson &amp; Johnson now, one dose. If you want only one shot, Johnson &amp; Johnson is available. That's 72.5%. You know, one time, we were at 95% of what we got, we used. But that's great because that gives us justification to get more and more. High schoolers have gotten, those that were 16 to 18, 19, some of them got their shots, the Pfizer shots. And right now, children under 18, children under 16, they're not able to get shots, but the scientific community is researching that as we speak. So overall, the Navajo Nation is seeing some great progress. And the last PowerPoint there just shows you the comparison between the Navajo Nation and the United States of America in COVID-positive cases. And here, you see the orange line is the Navajo Nation. Look at how low that is compared to the blue, which is the US. The US still has positive cases because we vaccinated a lot of our Navajo people. More percent than many states out there. Higher percent of some states out there. And it's because of our great work by our hospital teams and also those Health Command Operations Center that's led by Dr. Jill Jim. There's so many people to thank. There's the IHS, Navajo Department of Health Team, Navajo Nation, all the divisions and programs, all the healthcare facilities, their staff that are out there on a daily basis. There's even FEMA out there. There's even Department of Defense out there. We have federal agencies helping us. If you've been to a mass vaccination, there takes a lot of effort to do a vaccination drive. And I want to say to each and every one of them today, thank you so much. You are saving lives, you're on the front lines, putting your own health and well-being on the line for the greater good. And we appreciate that because you are helping our Navajo people, and you see that in the data, the numbers are down. And we are transitioning from red status to orange status today, ladies and gentlemen. And we appreciate you, the Navajo person, the Navajo people, for your hard work throughout these tough times. These are some tough times, but we will get through it. We will get through it because our ancestors got through some of these difficult times, and we will persevere and we will get through. We will get through it because our ancestors got through some of these difficult times and we will persevere and we will get through this COVID-19 pandemic. The public order that is going to be presented today, from red to orange statuses, businesses are going to be open to 25%. But they're going to have to turn in their reopening plans before they get the green light to reopen. Restaurants and dining facilities, personal care and services, casinos, lodging, those will be required to submit their plans, reopening plans, to Division of Economic Development under J.T. Willie. Public order, another public order that's going to be submitted will be the gathering of 10 or fewer people in churches and also traditional and religious gatherings. Chapter houses are not able to reopen because they have a resolution by the council that was approved that makes it three quorum. So we can't change that unless that resolution is either rescinded or amended. The other thing is too, that this is all for only Navajo people. Remember, the Navajo Nation Council, and we signed a law that says no non-Navajo to be on the nation, to be visiting or to be congregating. So that means even in our businesses. And so until that resolution gets changed or rescinded, this reopening, this soft reopening is only for the Navajo people. And I know that some people will get upset, but we have to do small steps. And we have to look at it as our nation as a bubble to protect our people first, our elders, those that are in the most vulnerable population category. So there'll be a little bit more information on the health orders. But So right at this time, I'm going to turn the time over to Dell. And this is where I need the Navajo people's help. Those of you that are on WebEx, you'll see the PowerPoint. And remember, keep in mind, Dell, people are listening on the radio. So some are not privy to watching, seeing the PowerPoint. So you might want to explain that a little bit more. And then Dr. Fowler will end the feed today. So thank you so much. God bless you.
Okay, Kehla President. Yat eh shekei ro she'dunei. My name is Dell. Kodjo etcha na lni naalcha. Adje bedaineshi etcha nashnesho. Kodoshin alt eso. Michelish chaneh. Ot eshlih di naalni naalcha dekho sunsaghi. Naas it's adah cho adje. Numbers, deira beditenneki. Adje ben delnesho. Nahi tla achich. Navei zel ine. COVID-19. Badenski do. Fight sado. Adateni. Adje hota bedaineshi li adje etcha. Ben delnesho. One zaahol jeshsho ho. President, gana nachha ben delnesho. Akho. The latest numbers, yegi yachho, Navajo Nation gating measures beditenneh. February 19th, only March 4th. The numbers for that time period. Kodoh alt eso bashnet dolel. This is our gating measures and indicators matrix. Jadi bekehao. Halit ah. Navajo Nation on dol nihla. Jo no ben delnesho. Di bekehao. Bekehao on dol nih. No, di there are five levels. If you look, there's a purple color is one of the levels. Auto red, auto orange. Joe, President, will be moving from red to orange. Basers, jano yahatzie. Auto, there's yellow and green. Because there are five levels. Auto di risk level beditenneki. Et oh. On dol nihhi Navajo Nation. Di danor trajectory, ya cases. Wejink cases, dequila COVID-19 banadenski. No. Ya adje deira ki. Nahi tla. Auto vaccine, da jaro testing. Auto public health capacity. Auto hospital capacity, as far as hospital beds and intensive care units, beds. These are some of the indicators. Bekehao. Bedenishto. Bekehao Navajo Nation. Now I can't advance my slide again. Okay. So this is, the next slide I'm going to show is what we call our Epi curve over the entire pandemic. From beginning of March 2020, a year ago, all the way to now, March 10th, 2021. We went through a number of cases. These are the two peaks that President was also referring to. The first one occurred back in May of 2020. Our first peak, auto. Our second peak, yehaniro. Ahotza. From the October, November, December was our second peak, our second wave. Auto kare, we're trending downward. We're seeing less cases, ya President, ohanoya hatzie. Auto, this is more of a recent, the second wave picture. We, you know, our second wave over the Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Year holidays, when people were gathering, when we saw, you know, a lot of the cases during that time, they were doing, seeing less cases and were going down every day. Auto DA map, our heat map. We produce this every week too. In Navajo Nation. Auto IHS service areas, ya. Ello cases, ebikehao nahatlaho. Di ta map ben del. Akho. Bequishin numbers by IHS service areas. There's Crown Point, Shipra, Kianta, Tubus City, Chinley, Fort Defiance, Winslow, Gallup. Jo eh hota hatahasso, IHS adje numbers nahi tla. Di ta bekehao. Map ben del. Jo aron hinagolo. Four corner states, our bordering states, Utah, Colorado, New Mexico and Arizona. Ello COVID cases. Ello, ello hota bekehao. Di ta map ben del. Nahat auto. Bekehao nchillchol jeshkho. Auto DA. Equal IHS service areas too. I mean, Joe Chinley, Crown Point, Fort Defiance, Gallup, Kianta, Shipra, Tubus City, Winslow. Auto New Mexico Satellite Facilities too, like Rema, Rohajule. Ja adje ello. IHS machkadahaso. Adje numbers nahi tla. Di ta bekehao. Numbers of cases every seven days. The numbers. So the last, February 26th through March 4th, that seven-day time period, Navajo Nation, across Navajo Nation, we had 101 cases. Akho. Auto DA testing. Testing currently, COVID-19 testing percent positivity. It's currently, it's at 5%. At one point, back in, I want to say, probably like in November through December, our percent positivity for COVID tests was at about 24%, 25%. That was really high. And today, we're seeing less cases and less percent positivity. So we're at, currently we're at 5%. So that's, we're thankful for that and it's a blessing and hopefully it continues to decrease from 5%. Of course, we'd like it to be 0% at some point going forward. So. Auto testing lebanaltdehutandi across Navajo. Auto hospital capacity, eh, jo hospital beds, oh, intensive care unit beds. Ende, ello. Adje information, again, nahi tla, from IHS Hospital, 638 facilities and ebikehao. If you can see my slide, there's an 80% threshold. If we're below that, and that's good, the hospital beds again. We're below that 80% threshold. And so that's a good sign that our hospital beds available. ICU beds are available for people who do, you know, get sick. They have beds available for them to enter a hospital and be treated. So ebikehao. ICU beds, do ahhotda. We're below that 80% threshold. That's a good thing and that's our current situation. We're below that 80% threshold across IHS facilities on Navajo. So that's a good sign. Auto public health capacity with contact tracing. Jundashka, ello contact tracers, they follow up on cases. Da itl kiddo. So. Adje ello team, holonko. Currently, there's 262 contact tracers across Navajo Nation. That's nine contact tracers for every new daily case. Di ello adje, yeah, there's an equation and a calculation that we do. So we want to be above five contact tracers for every new case. So we're at nine. So that's a good, a good sign too. Auto President, eh, vaccine yahwunna. So I'll just go over very quickly. He has more updated numbers based on what he said. Ello, jo vaccine numbers don nahi tla. We share it with President Nez and his team and Dr. Jim and the Navajo Nation Leadership Team. So. Ello, di vaccine, yegi, we're at, this is by, from Monday, March 8th, numbers. So of course, it's Wednesday now, so these numbers are going to be higher. So back on Monday, we were at 85%. But ministered of all the vaccine doses that were distributed or given to Navajo Nation. So that's, the vaccine teams are, I'll just say, they're doing an excellent job vaccinating our people across Navajo. So that's a great team that are doing all that work. Akho, last, this is my last slide. So now President said, you know, we're moving from red phase to orange phase. So you see this orange color? We've met, you know, these check marks. Our cases have decreased over the last seven days. So we've been going down every day. Testing too, testing is available and 5% positivity rate. That's also gives us a check mark. Hospital capacity, ro baho shne'ya. There's hospital beds and ICU beds below that 80% threshold. So beds are available for those people who do get sick and need treatment. So and then public health capacity, contact tracers. We do have sufficient contact tracers currently, so that gives us a check mark too. So we are doing very well. This is the best situation we've been in in quite some time. So we're very thankful for the current situation that we're in. So I'm going to stop here, President, and I'll hand the mic, I guess, back to you, President.
All right. Well, thank you, Dell, for that information. Those of you that were on Facebook got the presentation. So those of you that are on the radio, visit our Facebook page and you can get the presentation there. I'm sure you got updates from Dell, some of it. But we're Vigil. If you want to visit our Facebook page, you can download that gating measure PowerPoint. So turn the time over to Dr. Jill Jim for her updates as well. Dr. Jim?
Yes, President. Thank you for your comments. Dr. Jill Jim insiyado. On the engine, eh, look on shon tachini basis chain do. Sheyda shachay do. Is a funay deshunala. Ahotas, don shinto, kadi, it's isbahi yonje ebik eden shey. So. Ah shey kadi, di public health orders. Jo yegi she. Do, kadi deputy AG Dutcher shey kadi. So behditsa do. Kashi eni behditsi yegi shey ben na. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Ache, you can access a lot of this on the Navajo reopening, navajo-nsn.gov. So you'll be able to see the new reopening status is orange now. So go ahead and visit the webpage to get familiar with the changes. We do have Mr. Willie on the call with Division of Economic Development. He can talk about this portion here regarding the new requirements. So it's stated on there, before reopening to orange status, reopening plans can be emailed to navajo-nsn.gov. And just as a reminder, all the business plans and policies must be related to ensuring physical distancing. So Mr. Willie can talk about all these requirements and what we're looking in there as well. And so if we go down, you'll see the changes with the orange status here. And you'll see information about what President had mentioned earlier in Dell. And so it's 25% of maximum occupancy allowed for most businesses. So this doesn't mean a full reopening. So as for restaurants, we are allowing permanent outdoor dining areas to open at 25%. So that means they have to have some sort of permanent structure, either cement tables or if they already had some sort of outdoor seating area, they can operate at 25%. And then restaurants without permanent outdoor dining are allowed to do 10 tables max and with four individuals per table. So that's only for restaurants. So no anything in relation to food establishments or, I mean, anyone that doesn't have, that has to be a restaurant that can be allowed to do 10 tables outside. We also understand that I think those, access to those tables as weather permits, I would say, can be used. So. Ah shey otanata atando, biga. Eh, abiga ta di ne, kadi orange status. So that's going to be the new requirement. Otata atanешen, kadi 10 tables, go abiga ta di ne. Auto personal care services, ayta, and services, eh, those were already part. Although personal care services, I thought, um, and services, eh, those were already part of the last orange status, there wasn't a lot of changes. Although they casinos. Casinos that on the Navajo Nation game, Navajo casinos are, are allowed to open to the Navajo Nation residents and employees only. So either you have to be a Navajo Nation resident or Navajo Nation employee of some sort, um, can be allowed to, um, access the casino at 25%. All other businesses, um, youth programs, museums, flea markets, roadside markets, gyms, recreation facilities and movie theaters are not open yet. Um, but we'll be carefully monitoring a lot of these throughout, um, the next couple of weeks. As everyone is going down into a lower, um, stat, uh, lower numbers, we need to keep these down. And that's why we have gating measures. And anytime those gating measures, we're monitoring them every week now. We used to have it as a 17 day trend, but we have it as a seven day trend, as Dell mentioned. And so we'll be able to pick up any, um, red flags within the seven days. And we would begin making decisions if we need to go back into red status. So that's why we have gating measures. Each state has their own gating. Sometimes within the states, the counties operate differently. I did see people conversating about McKinley County going to green today. And so those are different, um, gating measures they use. Um, we all use actually the same criteria, but we are a little bit more strict in some cases because we know the risk of our population. Um, eh, she, um, been that chat, so I will, I can have Dr. Fowler translate some of this for me in a bit. Between going, um, from orange as well and. Eh, eh, it's because of our high risk population. Um, we have our own, um, household bubbles that we have our own Navajo Nation bubble. So in order to make these changes, these were not something that was seen a year ago. Um, this is. Although at, um, yellow phase and green phase, um, eh, 75 and 75%. Credit, um, Navajo Nation COVID-19 reopening. Although she a public health order. Eh, she could, um. Okay, I see so show, um, the public health order number five. Eh, um, they'll be available on the Navajo Department of Health webpage. And on that webpage, you'll see, um, the new public health order. So let me go ahead and share the different, um, public health order here so we know. So hopefully you see public health order number five on the screen. And it'll be effective on March 15th. Today is the announcement of the public health order, but it'll be effective on March 15th. So a couple of more days for businesses to be prepared. So although. Public health order. Um, credit. And so a lot of this here, as I mentioned, you'll, it'll be available. And pursuant to the legislation that the Navajo Nation wrote to remain closed to visitors. Um, and that's a legislation by the Navajo Nation Council. And it's closed and not accessible to visitors and tourists. So those are the reasons why, um, only certain services can be accessed. And you'll find the updated plan and the orange status here. And then the, the different changes that I had just talked about. And then the business reopening, so. I'll leave it right here. I don't know if, um, JT wants to add anything before we go to, um, Deputy AG, um, Dutcher. So I'll stop here and then see if JT has anything to add and then we'll hand it over to AG for public health order number six.
Oh, uh, yeah, Dr. Jim. Auto yat eh. Our businesses here on the Navajo Nation. And as we move forward, we are continuing to also provoke.
My name's Kimberly Dutcher. I'm the Deputy Attorney General for the Navajo Nation. I work at the Department of Justice and we assist the nation's Health Command Operations Center with drafting and finalizing the public health emergency orders. She Kimberly Dutcher. So I'm going to see if I can get public health emergency order number 2021 dash 006 shared on my screen. And let's see. I'm not seeing it here. I apologize for that. Can, um, Dr. Jim, can you get that up for us? And I wanted to highlight some of the, um, changes in public health emergency order number six. And this, like a public health emergency number five is effective on March 15th, 2021. And it effectively rescinds the stay at home public health emergency order and implements a stay safer at home order. And what this means basically is that we're encouraging people to stay at home, but they are not ordered to stay at home. And in addition, this public health emergency order also continues the daily curfew from nine o'clock PM to five o'clock AM every day. And also just a reminder, since this is effective on March 15th, the daylight savings time also starts on the day before on March 14th. A couple other things that this, uh, public health emergency order does is it includes guidance that the Health Command Operations Center previously provided to medicine people on conducting a safe, um, gatherings. And those gatherings will be limited to 10 or fewer people. And where this order also provides for them to avoid sharing utensils and other items. And also encourages folks participating in traditional ceremonies to wear masks, to wash their hands. And really, there's a whole list of good measures to take for traditional ceremonies. And this order will also be accessible on the NDOH website. So those of you who want to be familiar with all those safety items can read them. This order also provides guidance for the nation's churches and houses of worship. And we are recommending, and it provides for 25% or less maximum capacity. Also masks are required for churches and houses of worship. Social distancing is also required. And, uh, cleaning and, um, hand washing and, um, not eating food in a congregating setting is also not provided for. This, uh, public health order also provides for gatherings of up to 10 persons. And this is a difference from the last public health emergency order where gatherings were limited to five people. So now it will be 10 effective March 15th. Like the previous public health emergency order number five that Dr. Jim discussed, the Navajo Nation's roads continue to remain closed to visitors and tourists for the duration of the public health emergency. And, um, we're just not encouraging visitors and tourists to enter the nation at this time. So those are the highlights of public health emergency number 2021 dash 006. We, uh, encourage you to all to continue to take precautions, to wear masks, to social distance, to avoid travel and continue to wash your hands and continue to be safe, everyone out there. Thank you very much. Um, thank you, Ms. Dutcher. I just want to add one thing, um, regarding as I'm opening my camera here too. Um, there was mentioned, as President mentioned earlier, that we will still have a daily curfew here as well from nine PM to five AM. But businesses are able to operate between six AM and eight PM. Our previous public health order, um, allowed businesses only from seven AM to eight PM. And so everyone must be, um, must permit customers to obey the daily curfew. So those are, um, basically the main summary of the public health orders. Um, it's quite a lot, so go on the webpage and download it. Of course, one thing we emphasize is that all persons are highly encouraged to get any COVID-19 vaccination as soon as possible. We have three options here on the Navajo Nation, which is the, um, Moderna, Pfizer, and also the new J and J Vax, um, Johnson and Johnson vaccine. So any vaccine is helpful. So just know that those are some major changes that are occurring. And if there are questions, um, there is 928-871-7014. You can call tomorrow if you have any questions. So, um, I'm going to hand the time over, um, to Dr. Fowler. So Shamrock, go ahead and, um, help us with some of this interpretation that Ms. Dutcher and I provided as well.
It's. Amado. Then it's. How she know. Although he didn't. How she know. Though. He. Okay, do you. How. Now. Now. That. Okay. Okay. How. Okay. It. Yeah. Do. Ah, eh. Do. Do. Okay. It's. So. Do. He. Do. Although. How she. Be. Do. Although. Although. Now. He. He. Nich'Amayaj'ri, Hashit'Al Shida Dan'Hi Ke'hi, E Ra'ha'Yenask'ri. Akho Be'Hut'Anag Nish'tre'tna Nish'i Tre'da Leho. Do Leta'Owe't Eda Shin'wi Tsin Shikedo Shidne. Ado Hashin'oh La'nta'Asa'Nolne, Na'al'Tso's W'Le'eni Da'Ke'No'ah. Ado Ez'be Nahag'aj'da, El'Ke'na'Ah'w'Nel, Edo Ihehe. Kodo Hashin'oh La'A'Kwidge N'Chatsoda'Do Tsin, El'Chatsodiilzin, E E'Oba'ah'eh'ni Tsin. Akon Nas'go Ne'Ne'J'She'ay'ot'Ah Be Na'Ni T'Chindole. O Iyugo Na'ntikini Ye' Nichi H'ol'An, An'Ani Do Ba'xt'Ed'ni It'Eda Nde'Nde. Do O Iyugo Na'ntikin Nichi Hi'ila. Akho Shikedo Shidne, Di'Inni Kodo Be Nichil'Ho'Ne'i. Ha'J'ob Ik'Ed'ot'hi, Ha'J'ob Be Na'Ah'hin'ot'hi. Ado Sado Ya'at'ehi Ob'Atah'On'Nele, E E Do Da. Na'Nes T'Chwido Sanii Ya'He Shken De'? Ha'Il'Ada'Ne, Al'Asla'da'W'Ch'An'Ne, Dan'Hi Te'Nin De'? La'Ati'Ah'wo Dan'Hi Te'Ne, Ado Yo'Na'Te'L'Kida'An'ebana'nt'ka'An'ebi Nen'i. Do Shaj'ni Da, Do Shaj'Nzinda. Chala'Anne, N'La'hol'no, N'J'ad'hol'no. N'Na'hol'no Do N'Nsek'es'hol'no. Do La'Al'Yub'at'Ol'ida, Anne It'At'nt'e. Kode Ch'echi Nzad N'da Ba'ah'W'liya. Nzad N'Lini Bahastki'ii It'e, Ha'J'oyan'lt'ye. Ha'Ada'la'le Do Hut'ek'oh Ch'ain Ts'io Da. Do E Do Denne'kui Gal'hi Do Ob'At'Nida, Anne It'Te'Ne. Bel Ch'ain T'Jee Da N'Na'al'Tlo Shi Nik'e'ha'aj'ko Ob'At'Ne, E'Na Nza Ba'ah'W'liya. Ta'Ha'Nin De' El'Ke'da. Do Kal'E Di Shji'i Di'Ne, A'Al'An'ni Te'Do Nak'In'na'ntikin, A'Al'An'te. Akho Shikedo Shidne, Di'K'at, A A Ha'J'oo'k'oh La'Bi Di'Ne. A'Khot'k'oh An'Ndal'Ne, Di'Ch'ya'bel Naha'Z'An'go Do Da'Ik'is'Do Di. A'Na'J'osh'da Ta'Ho'Yegoh. Do E'Al'sla'peso Be W'ltcha E'Na Ki'yal'ke'ho, Akw'Nzago A'Ndal'Ne. Yegoh L'Ch'bi I'K'hande K'at E'Al'se'so Bi Iht'ik'ri. Ado Yegoh L'Lo'tso, Sl'So'i Bi Iht'Nadi'Kha'Ad E'Di'Yal'ke'ho Al'sla'peso Be W'ltcha'i. Akw'N'ledo T'Is'ja' Bi Hi'K'ri Da'Ad E'As'tran'Yal'Do Ba'Al'se'so, Peso Bi Ke'ha'W'ltcha'oh. Do E'Ah'ill'neh, Twenty-five percent, fifty percent, seventy-five percent. E'N'Dash'hi La'Ha'leit A'W'J'jo Dad'Adi'Ne. Akho Kodo Di Sh'Ch'ea'Al'La'Yah'Ho'Ne'i. A'J'Be Hez'Ani Lini Kodo Ez'el En'Ah'aj. A'J'Be Hez'Ani Lini Ch'Nadal'Ya Sho'he'Iks'ha'J'ok'oh A'El'Ke'w'Na'ah. Akwa'ah'An'nda Do'Lni Hut'Oh'ni Ch'ala'edi, Na'al'ni Hi Do'Bata'Del'Na'ey Yegoh Ya'Ndes'kit. Akwande, Shikedo Shidne, Nich'Nag'oh E At'Is'at'Ndal'kit, E Ba'ah'W'Nosin. Akots'Eda'Ani Hi'En'ot'Al'De'Yah' Kodo Be Lak'Anai Ke'je' E Personal Responsibility De'L'ne. Eda'Ani Nich'N'Ch'Anast'la, Do E'Ch'edah, Phans'La'da'Anne. Aden Is'Nlts'na'ei An'N'N'Anast'la. Sho'N'Le'go De'Shas'Al'Ch'J'Al'sa'pesa, Ay'Da Ez'Sh'An'Al'ya. Akwande, Nahon J'G'as'at'Do Ba'Oh'Ts'go, Bel Ik'J'Do'Lni'oh. Do Akwa'ato, Naz'El K'os'ota, Akwa'oh Hatz'Is'Ah'wo Hatz'Is'ip'Pe'P'Ch'Nah'ji'na'ey'Il'ni. E'Beni Na'Ani Hi'Ash'ho'de Shikedo Shidne. Ban'Nan Nich'ni'Kha', Ani Hi, Ba'ah'W'Ch'Yan'Do Denosin Do It'Ch'a'Oh'Zi. Do It'Ne, Ani Nich'N'Ch'Anast'la. Ado Ashit E Do'Zno'Zi It'Eda'Al'to'N'At'Nana'K'Al'hi Do Pan'Ch'ah'wi Tsin. Shan T'shedu'ta Kodo W'lt'At'Il'wo, T'shedu'Edo Ab'Nts'Kesa, E'Bi Sh'nta'k, E'W'lt'At'Il'wo. Ado Nts'Ik'is'ota, Ado Ah'ho W'lt'Il'wo'as'lo. Do E'Ch'Upam Ts'Kes, N'do Ah'w'nte, Na'N'N'ta'Te'I'Gr'hi, Ba'ah'W'Nosin. P'Chita' Ts'Pe'Zeta' Ts'At'At'Es'Pa'lo Aden T'Ch'I'Gr'ah. P'Ts'An'jo Da'Ch'J'do'Gr'ah, Ado H'Ch'Ni'Lu'w'oto, Ha'Is't'J'do'Ni. Do E'Kwa'As'L'sna'Ah'we, Ba'ah'W'Nosin Shikedo Shidne. Akwati'Aden Be Hez'Ani Ch'T'Ad'El'Ya' Do Ot'Ah, Ot'Eda St'Ano, Ben Nichil'Nah'wi Shne'ole. Ani Hi'Ot'N'di Ya Des'ki'ri E Kodo Ba'ah'eh'ni Tsin Shikedo Shidne. Ha'Is't'On'Naha'Ni Do'Le, A E Is'Yeg'oh Nan'Ye'nan Nichines Tchan. Do Nas'go Ne'Ne'J'E Ya'At'ek'oh, Nichil'Nah'wi Do'T'Ch'ado Ya'At'ek'oh Ke'Na'hi Di'Ni Do El'Ch'An'ade'K'Ch'at'ole. W'wena Ha'J'oh, Hashi'Il'Kenast'Ch'wido Sanii A'El'Ke'da'ho'In'Ne El'Zen'At'Chi'ot'Ch'ada. Ch'Ada'Bi N'da'Del'wo Hashi'ot'Ah'Ch'Ada'Nz'no El'Zen'At'Chi. E'Shi Ban'Nei Do'Ch'K'Na'hi Di'Ni Do'Le Sa'Ya'at'ehi Be'El'Be'El'Ch'Nad'Ah'W'li'ne Do Be'El'Ch'Nade'lt'ki'do'Le. Ot'Ah Be'El'Ch'An Ts'Nad'ik'es'ole. Do An'It'e' Denne'Ni'lt'le, Nich'Zad N'Lini Ash'ho'de. Ha'J'oh Be'Yacht'ki'Do'Bo'H'oll'ah, N'Ch'Al'ts'ne Nich'Y'tso'ken Nich'Nal'ke'he. Nich'Zad N'Lini Yeg'oh El'No'It'Es'at Shikedo Shidne, Ado Sh'Al'ts'ne. Yeg'oh El'Li Do'Edell'ne. E'Na, Bay Be'Ya'Dal't'ki'A'J'Be'shoda'Do Tsin. Ichil'Ka'An'Adi'ja Kodo Nas'go Ne'Ne'J'El'Chats'Nad'Adilzin Do'Le. Ya'at'ek'on Nichil'Nah'wi Do'T'Ch'Ad'J'E'Y'is' An'Nich'Na'ntikin. Akho K'Un Ts'Go'She' Kodo N'An'Anast'it'ole Do Ihehe. Kodo N'Tasis'Nol Ts'ito, Ah, Hut'oh E'Yav Kodo Nichil'Is'ja'An'An'ish'la'ole Shikedo Shidne. Akho K'Un Ts'Go'She' N'An'Anast'it'ole Kodo She'Sh'Na'P'P'Ch'Nado'Lni' Mr. President. Do Ihehe, Sh'Na'Do Ts'T'le N't'K'ag'Kodo, Nich'Ka'anejha'hi Shid'Do Ba'ah'eh'nsin. Do Ni'N'Zadi Do Denne'Bezadi N'Ch'N'oh'Bo'H'wi'An'Sh'Sh't'N'Le Do Ba'ah'eh'nsin Ihehe. K'Un Ts'Go'An'An'ish'la'ole Na'Hehe. President?
Oh, here. Uh, Dr. Fowler, Sh'De'J'? Ado Aden, Uh, Da'Is'Nol Ts'Ag'ido Da Nich'N'All'ki. A O Ch'yu Han'Ne'God E'ya, Di Dukwosn Ts'K'ag'ina Ast'E'Ts'ada. Ike'J'Na'Neshigi Ya. Ado Nichi Ke'ni Nich'Ne N'Ch'Al'ts'ne N'dal'Neshigi. E'Beni Na'Al'Al'He'el'ki'ond'Do'Bi'Gata O Ch'yu Na'ntikin Do Na'N'At'Ah. Han'Ne Hal'No'God Akho. Al'Al'He'el'kit, Nzad E N'Ch'Ah'ow An'Ne KTNN, KWRK, KKNS Bi'ye. Call Ait'An'Al'Al'He'el'kit Akwande K'J'ee Andi Yil'W' Facebook Live. So Kodo Shin Nichi Vice President, Vice President. Uh, if, uh, will give some concluding remarks to our viewers here. Tomorrow at ten AM, we'll be going more in-depth again. JT wasn't able to be, uh, on the Facebook page or tonight, but he'll be at ten AM with better internet access. Do Hut'K'at'ha'ot'ea' Le'Neb'K'yp'ka. Uh, it's just like that all over the nation. Sometimes you just have some bad coverage. Sometimes you float in and out of internet services. So JT will be a part of our ten AM Town Hall. So thank you for watching us. And again, this starts on the fifteenth, the fifteenth, from red to orange. Baby steps, gradual steps to reopening. So thank you so much. And Vice President, thank you for your leadership. We were at Winslow today. And I liked the plans and liked the discussions that were given to the Vice President in regards to economic development there in Delcon, Arizona, with the healthcare facility. So there's healthcare facilities and we got, maybe Vice President, you can talk a little bit about the one point nine trillion as well that has passed the House and money's coming to the nation. So thank you so much. Good night, everybody. God bless and go ahead and conclude our Town Hall, Vice President. Thank you for your leadership as well. And a prayer.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. President, thank you. And, and yes, as we close tonight's segment out, we appreciate you, all the viewers. I've seen the numbers go high as six hundred viewers. And you all wanted to know firsthand what reopening looked like. Well, this is the beginning of it and we appreciate all of you. And of course, you are why we do what we do here, leading the nation. President, Vice President, and all of our esteemed Cabinet level and program level members, and we appreciate all their leadership as well. As you know, it takes many to run a government. And even though for a season, we had a limited government and limited access to services and whatnot, I think those true compassionate hearts out there did rise to the occasion. And then many more activated themselves and you are some of those. And so we appreciate you all out there in Facebook Live land. Everybody has been steadily trying to not only stay safe and keep our families safe and our dear elders and our loved ones, but also seeing what they could do, availing themselves to volunteerism and just plugging in where they could. You know, I've seen it all across the president as well. Uh, you know, we just saw many leader types rise up for the occasion. And so as, before I close, and I'll close with a word of prayer as well. But, um, you know, this pandemic, what did it teach us? Early on, in maybe the first or second week, President and I had hosted the first, uh, you know, updates on this thing. We didn't know what it was back then, right, a year ago. And we just knew that a lot of people were getting sick and then the deaths were starting to mount. And we watched the numbers and how many of you remember that day? That last day you ever looked at the numbers because the numbers just kept increasing, you know, by the thousands across the United States. And at some point you just kind of, I don't know, maybe you got tired of seeing the negativity and the bad news of all the deaths and COVID cases that were rising all around us, even in our own homeland here, cases just rise and the deaths mounting. But at some point you had to resolve yourself just to maintain, you know, to, to rise and to maintain. So in that, in your rising, we advocated for you to think positively, to pray, to seek our Creator and His protection. And you rose and then you maintained, you praised and you worshipped and you prayed again. And, you know, again, we have lost over twelve hundred of our citizens and that's too many. And all across the world, I mean, we had a reset, if you will. And I pray that that, in that reset, that you committed yourself to be in the best that you can be, whether it was simply reading more books, right? And then delved into becoming a better person. And then along the way, we changed gears and we started honoring and praising the work of our health professionals, our nurses and our doctors and our Epi team and on and on. Then we had volunteers coming. We had FEMA boots on the ground, the National Guard. Uh, we had, you know, so many nonprofits. We have Samaritan's Purse, we had Doctors Without Borders. You know, we had the UVA Medical Students and, you know, many more. I mean, I list them now and I'll be remiss if I leave somebody out, which is not what I want to do. But simply it was all hands-on-deck mentality. And, um, you know, all we wanted to do was just plug in and participate where we could to lessen the burden on others. And we've seen it all across the land. We appreciate it. And since then, we've maintained our honor and our prayers and our appreciation of our frontline responders, our emergency medical technicians and ambulance transports, the flights, the flight nurses. And again, back to our frontline nurses, just recently we were at Salto Medical Center and was able to just really heartfelt give our sincere thanks to all of our nurses that are, are working hard. Um, many of you all again have sacrificed and you have dedicated yourself to protecting not only your patients, but many more, you know, as they came in one by one, two by two, ten by ten, you know, we had a, uh, we could have lost sight. We could have lost hope early on and yet the resilience of our people rose to the occasion. And, you know, people coming alongside and giving ada' girls and ada' boys. And it just was enough to get us to the next day, seemingly from one fire to the next. You know, it was a time, very tense of at times and also very rewarding. You know, how is that? Paradox in terms, but yeah, that's what we face. And Sh'denne, you have come out stronger than ever. And so I allude to this point. The crucible that we've been through, the crucible of this pandemic, what did it teach you? What did it show you about not only yourself, your family and all those that you've seen? You know, you could start from the, the top down, but we in turn as leaders, we want to think from the bottom up, all of those that are behind the scenes that will probably never have their names mentioned, that yet contributed greatly to this fight against COVID-19. The, um, early onslaught and the response and then the vaccines. And that came out and you remember there was reservations and widespread reservations. And, and our president was amongst the first to get a vaccine and leading the way, right? Leading by example, front, leading the charge. And now here we are, one year into this and our numbers have flattened. And we praise, we praise the Lord. Amen. We give thanks where thanks is due. We worked like it depended on us, but we pray like it depended on our Creator. And there you are, and there we were, all just contributors and participating in this worldwide pandemic. Who would have thought we as leaders would be in this position? Who would have thought you all would be affected by this so much? We learn new words, we have new vernacular, we have new vocabulary and we're the better for it. Sh'denne, tonight I want to leave you with a thought-provoking question. Thought-provoking, much like when a goat chews cud, right? And he'll chew it for a while, gnaw on it and save it for later and then pull it back up and gnaw on it again, you know? That's what I mean, chew it like a goat chewing on cud. You'll chew on it again, but in this crucible that we just went through, what did you learn about yourself? How are you going to be better going forward into the next week, the next month, the next year, the next decade? You know, that's what pandemics do. I pray that this pandemic does not, that even though we want to forget everything about it, especially the deaths and the hardship, those hardships are meant to bring a resilience, to bring a perseverance, to bring tenacity, moxie to the people. It's crucible of this pandemic. What did it teach you and how are you going to use it to become better? You see, our president, Jonathan Nez and myself and our, and our families, although we're appreciative of all the prayers that many have prayed for us to be safe and to be protected, we did the same and we pray for all of you on our knees, tears sometimes, praying for all of our people all across the land. On February sixth, we extended that prayer to other tribal nations that God, our Creator Yahweh, Bohonihi God, De'An God would eradicate this COVID-19 virus from our land. You see, our Creator thinks our land is special. We as First Nations were set on this continent before anybody was here. That was His plan. And as First Nations or as the host people, there was His original intent. And of course, you know how history has played out. That intent, I believe, was usurped by another plan. But yet we're still here. There's a reason why we're still here. I believe our prayers are powerful. And on February sixth, we convened a meeting with other tribes across North America, all the way up from Barrow, Alaska, our brothers and sisters, our Athabaskan brothers, Sem'upia, uh, brothers and sisters. They had, did some praise and worship on that day and... They had did some praise and worship on that day and it was amazing. We felt the presence of our Creator, even in here in my living room, in my dining room here in Windorok. We felt the presence of the Lord. We did, we prayed and we praised and we sang songs just to bring Him. And the word says that He inhabits the praises of His people. In your hearts you. In this crucible of this pandemic, I pray that many of you had just reached out because you met your end. I don't know what to do, Lord, if you're God, if you're real, show me, speak to me, heal our people. And on February sixth, we did that collectively. The very next day, our triple digit numbers slowed. And they've been slowing ever since. The Bible says that all good things come from above, the Father of lights. And wanting to give credit where credit is due. He showed up and these numbers have come down dwindling day by day, number by number. For a month, for a month, for a month from February sixth. And so in this crucible, I pray that as we come out of this, as we open up and recover safely, that we continue to give thanks. For where we've been, we'll not forget it, we'll not soon forget it. I know many of you are still mourning losing loved ones. We'll not forget this and I don't, I don't want you to, but to remember where you've been and where you met your end. And where you called our Creator, God on the scene. And He is still showing Himself mightily. And so as we continue to see these numbers continue to dissipate and go away and COVID nineteen virus eradicated from our lands. Remember the prayers of all of you all and all of those who prayed that God would heal the land. And thus the people will be touched and saved and healed and prosperity would come. And as I say that, we're getting ready to receive, dare I say it, she'da. Perhaps a billion dollars to our Navajo Nation. In this Save America Act that President Biden will sign on the fourteenth. We still need your prayers. What is it going to look like? And President and I are going to work hard, harder than ever before. On how to spend these money for the benefit of you all, she'da. I love you and we continue to pray for you all. Pray, join our prayers because there's power in unity. There's power in many that are praying in one mind, one accord. That we could use this money for electrical infrastructure. Let's turn on many more of our dear ones who have been without. Let's bring water to the farthest reaches of our Navajo Nation. Let's bring broadband to the deepest corners of our reservations so our students. And our health professionals can have the benefit of broadband and internet capability. In the remote and deepest places of this land that we know as Dinata. Again, we're all in this together. And so tonight, as I close, we'll simply just give thanks for where we've been and we'll give thanks for where we're going. And good night and God bless as I close. Ah yeah, Deen God. On this historic day, Lord, where we start to open up. Lord, with reservations, some of us, but Lord, with with hope and anticipation, Lord, that we can. Uh, walk in a land that has been freed of the virus, Lord. The virus has left its mark. And yet we are still here, Lord, to some would say pick up the pieces. But Lord, I want to say we have a new beginning. This crucible of this pandemic, Lord, what did it teach us? So I pray that many had come to know you as Savior and that many had prayed and was awakened, Lord, from their slumber in you. Lord, many across the land as revival came, Lord, and continues to come, Lord. May your light shine upon this land and prosperity to come, Lord, and healing to come and to benefit all, Lord. And protection, Father, as many come to know you as friend. As Savior, as healer, as strength and tower, shield and rampart. Lord, the battle is yours. So we thank you again. We pray that Father, any fear that lingers would be gone in Jesus's name. Because you do not give us a spirit of fear, but of power and of love and of a sound mind. You protect our minds. And so Father, we pray for your safekeeping for all the people all across the land, Lord. May they find you while you may be found. We thank you again. We ask you to be with all those tonight, Lord, that are still struggling, Lord. May your love flow into that room. May your love flow into that residence, into that community, Lord. May your grace and mercy, Father, be enough, Lord, for us. And Father, I pray for favor all across the land, Lord, as the nation, the Navajo Nation. And First Nations all across this North American continent would arise, shine, Lord, Father. And walk into all the blessings of your original intent. That you meant for First Nations, Lord, the host people. You set us here, we are still here. May we honor you and bring you glory in everything that we do. We thank you for this night. We pray these things in Jesus mighty name. Seal it with your spirit now. Ah yeah, Deen God. Amen. Everybody have a great night. We appreciate you. Continue to pray. Until next time. Hakona, Vice President signing out.